I'm Jennifer Raitt, I'm the Executive Director of the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. Pursuant to Sections 12 of Chapter 40C of Massachusetts General Law, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, or NIMCOG, is holding this public hearing tonight, in compliance with open meeting law, to consider the appeal made by CRT Development Realty LLC, owner of the Talbot Mills Dam located on the Concord River upstream of the Falkner Bridge, of the decision of the Billerica Historic Districts Commission decision denying its application for historic districts review for the Talbot Mills Dam removal and Concord River Ethological Restoration Project. The decision is being reviewed by NIMCOG. This hearing was officially opened on Tuesday, September 16th, and has been continued at the request of the appellant or NIMCOG to this date and also allowed by the Town of Billerica and agreed upon by the appellant to this viewing Monday, December 1st. Many documents were posted alongside the meeting notice, NIMCOG website, and any person who is interested in or wishing to be heard on this matter is hopefully appearing this evening at this time and place that we've designated. We are also accepting comments through Friday, December 5th, 2025 at 4:00 p.m. Please email those comments directly to me, jenniferraitt@jraitt@nmco.org. And with that, I am going to now, if the public hearing is officially opened, and I'm going to provide a couple of introductions to the folks who will be making some brief presentations. With us tonight, we have the appellant represented by Adam Brodsky. Adam, would you please unmute yourself and say your name and represent who you're representing?
Executive Director Raitt, good evening. My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm an environmental and land use attorney. And as you noted, I represent CRT Development Realty LLC, the applicant. Robert Martin is the manager of the LLC. He is attending this evening. And as you know, CRT has various partners with respect to the project, including OARS Three Rivers, and Matthew Brown, the executive director of that nonprofit, is also attending. And we also have Jill Griffiths, a professional engineer and water resources engineer with Gomez and Sullivan Engineers, or the project engineers.
Thank you very much, Attorney Brodsky. And also with us tonight, we have Wendy Frontiero, who is the consultant, NIMCOG has retained to, will also be providing some remarks this evening. Wendy, would you please introduce yourself?
Wendy Frontiero, architect and historic preservation consultant. As Jenny said, I've been engaged by the NIMCOG to review the appeal and decision.
And with the Town of Billerica, would the individuals, please representing the Town of Billerica, introduce themselves? I do not see the person who I thought I would see, so.
Okay, my name is David Gagliotti. I'm the chairman of the Billerica Historical Districts Commission.
And is there an attorney also on this call?
The person who will be speaking on behalf of the commission is Dan Valentine. Dan?
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Valentine. I'm a member of the Historic Districts Commission, so I will be speaking later on the commission's behalf.
Okay, thank you, Dan. And so with that, after following all of the presentations, which will be about 10 minutes each, we will then open it up for public comments. And after we're finished all the public comments, I'm going to close the hearing. The chat has been disabled here. So again, if you have any comments and you do not have an opportunity to speak, you are more than welcome to send me a message by email. And again, the email address is jraitt@nmco.org. All of the information for this hearing, again, is on the NIMCOG website. If you have any trouble finding any of that, nimco.org will be the way that you can access any additional details. So with that, I am now going to request that Wendy Frontiero provide an overview of the review of the appeal of denial. Wendy?
Thank you. I'm happy to be here. Process. I'm going to read from my notes, so don't neglect anything. I'm an, and I noted before, I'm an architect and historic preservation consultant with master's degrees in both architecture and historic preservation. My consulting work, excuse me, covers architectural and historical research and evaluation, applications for local and national historic designations, and consultation on design review requirements on the federal, state, and local levels. I have 17 years' experience as a Stark Resources Coordinator for the Big Dig Project, three years as staff architect for the Boston Landmarks Commission, and four years on staff of the Massachusetts Historic Commission. The Northern Middlesex Council of Governments requested that I undertake an independent review of the Billerica Historic District Commission's decision in June 2025 to deny the application for removal of the Talbot Mills Dam. My purview has been to provide an independent opinion on whether the denial of the application was justified based on a local historic district laws and regulations and on the substance of this case from the point of view of historic preservation. I have made no assessment of hydrological, ecological, engineering, or permitting issues. I have focused on historic district law and appropriateness under Chapter 40C and local bylaws. I'm not a lawyer, and I've not assessed procedural aspects of the case, including the determination of substantial hardship or the methods and mechanics of the legal process. I visited the Talbot Mills Dam site on September 10, 2025, in the company of Jill Griffiths from Gomez and Sullivan Engineers, Susie Bresny of the Mass Department of Fish and Game, and Matt Brown and Heather Conkraton of OARS Three Rivers. We reviewed the conditions of the dam and the river and the plans for dam removal. We also discussed in general the application to the Billerica Historic Districts Commission. For background, I have reviewed numerous documents related to this case, including context for the historical significance of the dam, most notably National Register nominations, the town's historic district study report, and evaluation reports by Public Archaeology Laboratory. Also, the local historic district bylaw and regulations, the state enabling legislation for local historic districts, which is Chapter 40C, the proponents' original application supplementary information and appeal, meeting minutes for the Billerica Historic Districts Commission, and relevant case law in the form of Warner versus Lexington, 2020. The decision of the Historic Districts Commission to deny the application for the dam removal appears to be supported by evidence and to be within the authority of the Historic Districts Commission. As evaluated by two National Register nominations, the local historic district study report, and two studies by Public Archaeology Lab that were solicited by the appellant, the dam is a contributing resource to the historic districts of which it is a part. Generally intact and well-preserved, it is important for its strong connections to the manufacturing history of Billerica and to the operations of the Middlesex Canal, which is significant on the local, state, and national levels. Dams are structures as defined in both state and national guidelines for historic resources. Chapter 40C and Billerica's bylaw both encompass both buildings and structures. Dams and other infrastructure are regularly reviewed by historic agencies under state and federal environmental and historic preservation laws. The review proceedings for this application appear to be appropriate and consistent where the procedures and recommendations outlined by state-enabling law, the local bylaw, and local review standards. Ample opportunities for public comment appear to have been provided and used during the public hearings on this application. Removal of the dam would most certainly adversely affect the character of the local historic district by removing two of its core features. The dam and its associated mill pond are iconic visual features of the local and national historic districts of which they are a part. Together, the dam and mill pond represent a cultural landscape that is foundational to both the manufacturing heritage and transportation achievements of North Billerica, aspects of history that specifically form the basis for the local historic district designation. At this point, which is preliminary, in my opinion, a predominance of documentation and regulatory authority support the historic district commission's decision to deny the application to remove the Talbot Mills Dam. It is also my opinion that the denial of the application appears to lack case-specific written justification for its decision, as called for in Warner versus Lexington. That case law calls for detailed explanations of how the statutory language applies to a commission's decision. The written decision of the district's commission references only the commission's general purpose to preserve and protect the distinct characteristics of buildings and places in Billerica. If an appeal were to be made to Superior Court, Chapter 40C and Billerica's bylaw would both allow the court to remand the case to the local commission for further action. If feasible, I suggest that the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments still remand the case in order to meet the procedural requirements of Warner versus Lexington. Possible appropriate mitigation might also be considered by the Historic Districts Commission at that time or be delegated to the separately required Section 106 review of this project. And I look forward to hearing further testimony from the appellant and members of the public at this hearing.
Thank you, Randy. And now we are going to move on to Adam Brodsky, Attorney Brodsky, who is also going to make a presentation.
Thank you, Executive Director Raitt. As you mentioned, this is an appeal of the denial of an application for certificate of non-applicability or alternatively hardship by the Billerica Historic Districts Commission. The project is fundamentally an ecological restoration project to remove a potentially hazardous dam. The dam was constructed in 1828 to provide industrial water power, and it no longer serves that function. Dams are in fact regulated by the Massachusetts Office of Dam Safety, and this dam has been determined to be a significant Class II hazard, which requires significant maintenance and improvement to comply with current standards. And we pose that the dam is a significant public safety concern. The dam also results in significant adverse ecological impacts and prevents fish passage on the river. Its removal has been designated a priority project by the Massachusetts Division of Ecological Restoration. CRT does not have the financial resources to maintain and improve the dam. In fact, the cost to bring the dam into compliance with current regulatory standards is over $2 million, which is more than the cost to remove the dam, which has been determined to be $1.2 million. CRT offered to convey the dam for nominal consideration to various entities, including the Town of Billerica. Those invitations were refused, or other respondents demanded unreasonable conditions for the acquisition. CRT is part of a private public partnership, including federal and state agencies and local nonprofits. And this project, as Ms. Frontiero suggested, far as extensive federal, state, and local permitting, and specifically with respect to historic preservation, NOAA, the NOAA Restoration Agency, is the lead federal agency for national historic preservation or under the National Historic Preservation Act, Section 106 review. This team has also filed a project notification form with the Massachusetts Historical Commission. The project is funded, but the funding relates only to the removal of the dam, and there's no funding for maintenance or improvement of the dam to meet current regulatory requirements. As Ms. Frontiero indicated, the dam is listed in the National Register of Historic Places as a contributing resource to the Middlesex Canal Historic and Archaeological District and the Billerica Mills Historic District and Northern Billerica Mills Local Historic District. And I just want to make clear, CRT is not suggesting that the dam does not have historical significance. However, it's our position that CRT is entitled to a a certificate of non-applicability or certificate of hardship. And we're going to focus on those two elements. I'll speak to the first, which is the issue of non-applicability, and I'll turn the presentation over to Ms. Griffiths. CRT maintains that that there actually are no factual findings supporting the decision of the HDC in this instance. The details of my argument are provided in my July 2, 2025 appeal letter, which was submitted to the HDC is also given to NIMCOG. CRT does not believe that the Massachusetts Historic Districts Act, Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40C, nor the Billerica Historic Districts bylaw was ever intended to apply to dams. I think we can agree that dams are not buildings. But the question is, is whether a dam is a structure under the act and the local bylaw, which should be reviewed for its exterior architectural features. And we suggest that the answer to that question is no. There's a definition of structure in both the act and the local bylaw, as referenced by Ms. Frontiero. The word dam does not appear in the definition of structure. And as I mentioned, dams are regulated separately under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 253 by the Office of Dam Safety. Similarly, dams are not regulated by local building departments under the state building code. Even if a dam can be considered to be a structure under the act and the local bylaw, we suggest it does not have typical exterior architectural features. Presumably, the materials used for the dam were not selected in 1828 for their architectural qualities, the kind, color, and texture of materials. The dam does not have typical architectural features such as doors, windows, lights, or signs. We think that neither the act nor the bylaw are ambiguous with respect to this. Again, we're not conceding it may not have historic significance. This is an interpretation of both the act and the bylaws applies to this particular structure. However, even if the act or the bylaw are somehow ambiguous, the courts will interpret the act and the bylaw to avoid absurd or unreasonable results when the language is susceptible to a sensible meaning. We suggest that a sensible review of the act and the bylaw suggests that a certificate of non-applicability should issue here. And obviously, if a certificate of non-applicability issues, the issue of hardship is no longer relevant. And so with that brief summary, I'm going to turn the presentation of the issue of substantial hardship to Ms. Griffiths. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam, and Executive Director Ms. Raitt. I am going to share my screen, if that's okay. I have some slides. So I will go ahead and do that now. Oh, I guess it's disabled. Is there any way to enable it? If not, I can run without it.
I think you're going to have to run without it.
Okay, I can do that. Thank you. And again, I am Jill Griffiths with Gomez and Sullivan Engineers. I am a water resources engineer, and I have been working as the lead design engineer for this project since 2014 on behalf of CRT Development Realty. So I am just going to talk briefly about the hardship, the certificate of hardship argument for the dam application that was submitted to the HDC. And I'll try to be brief, and we can come back to it if there's any questions. So the generic application form that is provided by the HDC is submitted, and that begins the review process for whether it's a certificate of appropriateness of non-applicability or of hardship. And so it's not a separate specific form for hardship. It's just the initial application form, which is what was submitted by the applicant. And under both the state statute and the HDC bylaw, there is a provision for a certificate of hardship in which if the commission determines that owing to conditions specific to that structure or building, failure to approve an application would result in a substantial hardship, whether financial or otherwise to the applicant, and that granting the applicant will not involve substantial detriment to public welfare or substantial derogation from the intent and purpose of the bylaw, then the commission shall grant a certificate of hardship. Now, the HDC review standards also have some standards for certificates of hardship. And to, in order to issue a certificate, the commission must find that failure to approve the application would result in a substantial hardship for the applicant. And that is certainly the case here, not only financial hardship, which would come into play for costs for regular dam safety inspections, maintenance, repairs that are needed, as well as fish passage improvements, fish passage implementation that would be needed if the dam were to be repaired, and insurance costs and so forth. Also, liability hardship due to the risk of dam failure and potential property damage downstream. Secondly, the commission must also find that granting the application will not involve substantial detriment to public welfare. And that is certainly the case for this project. In fact, quite the opposite is true, that significant benefits will be provided for public welfare from the project, such as the public safety enhancements due to elimination of that dam risk, reduction of upstream flooding, elimination of a potential downstream flooding hazard, improvement of climate resilience, improved recreation opportunities, and ecosystem services provided for the public by the ecological restoration of the river and all of the water quality benefits that are associated with that. And lastly, the commission must also find that granting the application will not result in substantial derogation from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. Now, certainly, all variances and waivers result in some derogation of the intent and purpose of bylaws, but the key here is whether it's substantial. And so we took a look at the purpose of the bylaw, the HDC bylaw, and it's lengthy. I kind of went through it in different sections, but I'll just kind of highlight some of the key points. So the purpose is to promote the educational, cultural, and economic and general welfare of the public. Again, we covered the welfare benefits that would result from the project and do that through the preservation and protection of distinctive characteristics of places that are significant to the history of the town. The project will restore a place that is very significant in the long pre-industrial history of this area, as represented by the use of Native Americans of this site for 10,000 years prior to the dam being built. Also, continuing on with the purpose, through the maintenance and improvement of settings for such places, again, this project will eliminate the need for maintenance and will improve the ability of the public to access and interact with this site. And through the encouragement of design compatible therewith, the design is compatible with these goals. And lastly, through the prevention of development, which would impair the historic district. And this project is an ecological restoration project that does not involve any development. And continuing on to the last relevant review standard, it indicates that the commission may require conditions that, if needed, to secure the objectives that have been waived in the standards. And this is actually very well-covered for dams and historic structures under the Section 106 consultation project process, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with. It's a federal historic mitigation consultation process. For this project, it's being led by NOAA as the lead federal agency. The HDC is a consulting party and has attended various consultations throughout the process. And the end result of the process will be a memorandum of agreement that will include various mitigation measures for the historic loss of the dam and mill pond, such as, it's not finalized yet, but this could include things such as, it will certainly include written and photographic documentation of the dam in accordance with both state and National Park Service standards. It will include archaeological monitoring and surveys during construction to look for any potential artifacts and salvage of those if they are found, interpretive signage, and potentially other measures as well that are being developed with those consulting parties. So we've covered the review standards, and now moving on to, there's an appendix in the review standards that indicates some additional information that might be requested by the commission in order to make a determination of hardship. Now, we did inquire with the commission several times if they were, if they needed any additional information and didn't receive anything in particular, but so we just attempted to check all the boxes in that list that is provided in the review standards. Some of those are not applicable. It's a long list of maybe a dozen items. Many of them are not applicable because the dam was omitted from a deed in the sale of a property, and so there is actually no tax assessor's parcel associated with the dam. So many of the items pertain to market value of the property, you know, property appraisals, property listings, property assessments, real estate taxes, et cetera. None of those are applicable. However, I will note for the, there's one item for the annual gross income of the property. Of course, there is no income from this dam. It is not serving any current use. And property listings is of note, because as was mentioned earlier, the applicant did attempt to gift the dam to various entities over the years. So that's the relevant item there. Moving on to the applicable items from the list, we did cover those in the May submittal of all the additional hardship information that was provided. And so that includes things like the purchase details. Again, we provided information about that deed transaction, the ownership type, estimated costs for demolition and rehabilitation. So we took a look at if the alternative were pursued to rehabilitate the dam. What would that cost? And included all the necessary items that would be required there. Of significant note is the requirement to install fish passage if modifications are made to the dam, so that would be a significant undertaking in cost. Further, the list asks for a technical report regarding the structural soundness and suitability of the dam. That's covered under what is required by the state, known as Phase One Dam Safety Inspection Reports every five years for this type of dam. So that was provided. And then for the economic feasibility of rehabilitation. So again, I can go through more detail. I have slides showing all of these things, but kind of the takeaway is dam, as Adam mentioned earlier, dam repair, especially because it would require fish passage, but even without that, would be significantly more expensive than dam removal. Because in addition to the minor, somewhat minor, some are more significant things listed in the dam safety report, it was uncovered during the course of this project and the advanced hydraulic modeling that was done for this project, that the dam does not pass the spillway design flood, the flood that it is required to pass in accordance with state regulations. And so in order to address that, there are several options to increase spillway capacity, usually involving lengthening the spillway outward or cutting down the dam height, all of which would require significant modifications to the dam that would have historical impacts to both the dam and the mill pond as well. And it's a very constrained site. There isn't, there aren't a lot of options for expanding that spillway. So that would essentially be a dam rebuild project at that point, plus a fish ladder. So definitely, dam removal is the economically viable option, as well as Adam mentioned, the grants that are secured for this project will only fund dam removal. They will not fund dam repair or ongoing maintenance. So that is, that is why this is the economically feasible option. Just paging through my slides to see if anything else of note. So in summary, failure to approve the certificate of hardship will result in a substantial hardship, financial and otherwise, to the applicant. Granting the certificate will not involve substantial detriment to public welfare or derogation from the purpose of the bylaw. Rather, it will provide substantial benefits to public welfare, as we noted. And therefore, dam removal is the only reasonable and economically feasible alternative to bring the dam into compliance with state regulations. And it is requested that NIMCOG consider annul-ing the hardship decision because it is not warranted based on the evidence. And that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Director Raitt. Obviously, I'm available, as Ms. Griffiths is also available, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you both. Now I'm going to turn it over to the town, and I believe that will start with Mr. Gagliotti or?
It's Dan Valentine will be.
Dan Valentine. Okay, Mr. Valentine.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me clearly? Okay, great. So CRT development, and forgive me, I'm also reading from papers similar to Ms. Frontero did, so please bear with me. CRT Development Realty makes a number of claims in its appeal that we believe need to be addressed. Specifically, CRT claims that the dam poses significant public safety concerns, that the project should not fall within the jurisdiction of the HDC, that the project should qualify for a certificate of hardship, that the HDC's decision fails to address a certificate of non-applicability as specifically requested, and that the decision odds face insufficient in law, not warranted by the evidence, and should be annulled. So speaking on behalf of the HDC, we believe each of these claims is without merit. Regarding CRT's claim that the dam poses significant public safety concerns, CRT has presented no evidence quantifying the risk to public safety, and instead merely uses the words to get people to subjectively imagine what would happen if the dam were to fail. Similarly frightening wording has also been used by the Merrimack River Watershed Council, when it stated that removing the dam would quote, remove the risk of a catastrophic failure of the dam, which would release a significant amount of water at once, potentially flooding downstream properties. Rather than speculating about what might happen, a proper risk analysis requires assessing, one, the likelihood of the event occurring, and two, the consequences of the event if it occurs. Yet various documents provided by CRT and others actually minimize both aspects of this risk assessment. Regarding the likelihood of failure, in 1999, the Commonwealth inspected the dam and stated that, quote, "The dam abutments and the spillway show no sign of misalignment, movement, or vertical settlement," close quote. Ten years later, in 2009, the dam was evaluated by Geo-Technical Consultants Incorporated for the dam's owner, CRT. That consultant stated that they, quote, "Found no indication of instability or seepage, which compromised the integrity of the dam." And they, quote, "Observed no structural defects concerns." They said it was based on their inspection and review as well as historical evidence and concluded that the dam is stable. And, quote, "There is little risk of overtopping during the spillway design flood." They also know that historical reports provided in the FEMA studies suggest that the dam has never been overtopped in its nearly 200-year existence. Although the consultants characterized the dam as merely being in fair condition, they know that this was due to CRT's, quote, "Lack of routine maintenance and operational procedures," close quote. And this is consistent with Commonwealth's inspecting guidelines for dams, which state that a fair rating means that although significant operational and maintenance deficiencies may exist, there are, quote, "No structural deficiencies," close quote. If we fast forward another six years to 2015, CRT's consultant again inspected the dam and arrived at the same conclusion they did from their prior study. Yet inspired these facts, the MWRC's website has a story map that we believe misleads the public by falsely saying that the Talbot Mills Dam is, quote, "In poor condition," close quote, followed by talk of a catastrophic failure. We believe this is nothing more than fear mongering. Now regarding the second part of a risk analysis, the consequences of failure. In 2009, CRT's consultant also performed a dam failure analysis, which can be fairly characterized as meaning the second part of a valid risk analysis, that is, a quantitative analysis of the consequences of failure. This analysis conclude that if the dam failed, then, quote, "The increase in flood elevation is approximately 0.2 feet, which is far less than the two-foot rise of floodwater offered as guidance regarding hazard potential per the Commonwealth's Dam Safety Regulations." For reference, a 0.2-foot predicted rise is less than the diameter of a soda can. That consultant's 2015 report also states that, one, quote, "The failure of the dam at maximum pool will not result in significant damage to the bridge or other downstream structures," close quote. It also states, quote, "The potential damage to habitable structures will be minor, since no structures are in the water's direct path," close quote. Together, these studies suggest a low chance of failure and little impact if a failure occurred. Next, CRT claims that the project is not within the HDC's jurisdiction. Although CRT correctly observes that the dam is not a building, it then conflates being a structure with then also having to have exterior architectural features. The latter is not a prerequisite for the structure to be within the HDC's jurisdiction. As stated in Bill Rica's bylaws, a structure is, quote, "A combination of materials or part thereof other than a building, including, but not limited to, a sign, fence, wall, statue, mechanical device, bridge, walk, driveway, or road." There is no architectural feature requirement to this definition. However, the HDC notes that even if there were such a requirement, the definition of an architectural feature in the enabling statute, Mass. General Law's Chapter 40C, Section 5, expressly defines an exterior architectural feature as, quote, "Such portion of the exterior of a building or structure as is open to view from a public street, public way, public park, or public body of water." The bottom line is that any part of the dam that is visible to the public from public property is deemed an architectural feature as defined by the legislature. Additionally, the bylaw's definition expressly states that structures are not limited to the examples given. The list of examples merely presents structures that are likely to be assessed by the HDC. It is not intended to be an exhaustive list. But in terms of similarity to list examples, the dam can fairly be characterized as a stone wall, albeit one that happens to hold back water. The dam is, in fact, a combination of materials other than a building and is therefore a structure within the HDC's jurisdiction. But in an effort to extricate the dam from the definition of a structure, CRT had to go 45 miles away to the town of Marshfield to find a bylaw that lists dams separately from structures. We're not in Marshfield. Its bylaws cannot be used to overrule the clearly worded definition in the bylaws of Bill Rica. There's no ambiguity in the bylaw's language, notwithstanding CRT's assertions. Now regarding the idea that there must be architectural features, and assuming one ignores the definition from the legislature, the closest worrying the Bill Rica bylaws is where they define the intent and purpose of the HDC. Specifically, the bylaw establishing the HDC states that is, quote, "For the purpose of preserving and protecting significant buildings or structures that, quote, 'reflect distinctive features of the architectural, cultural, political, economic, or social history of the town.'" Now, rather than being a list of exemplars, this is an exclusive listing of five features that can be considered by the HDC, of which architectural features is just one. We believe we correctly determined that the dam has local and national historical significance, warranting protection and preservation. In a further attempt to avoid the HDC's jurisdiction, CRT submitted supplemental information in which it pointed to Section 9 of the bylaw that created the Bill Rica HDC. In doing so, it focused on wording stating that the bylaw cannot be construed to prevent meeting, quote, "requirements certified by duly authorized public officer to be necessary for public safety because of an unsafe or dangerous condition." First, it should be noted that Section 9 of the bylaw is titled "Ordinary Maintenance Exemption." So it relates to the maintenance of a structure, not the destruction of one. And it merely establishes that the HDC cannot prevent an owner from maintaining its structure. Additionally, the wording talks about public safety due to an unsafe or hazardous condition. Yet evaluations of the dam by CRT's own consultant establish that the dam is not unsafe, rather its condition is characterized as fair with no structural issues noted. With regard to being hazardous, the dam's hazard potential, as defined by the Department of Conservation and Recreation's Dam Safety Regulations at 302 CMR 10, is based on the potential consequences of failure. The hazard potential per the regulation, quote, "Has no relationship to the current structural integrity, operational status, flood routing capability, or safety condition of the dam." Now regarding the idea that the project qualifies for a certificate of hardship, the HDC's bylaws state that two requirements must be met to grant a certificate. The first is that failure to approve an application will result in substantial hardship, whether financial or otherwise to the applicant. Neither substantial nor hardship are defined in the bylaws. So it's left to NIMCOG's discretion on what constitutes a hardship and whether that hardship is then a substantial one. But per CRT's appeal, it states that it has expended about $67,000 since 1997. This equates to about $200 per month. Yet CRT, yet any claim of financial hardship is blighted by the fact that CRT just paid over $400,000 to purchase a property adjacent to the dam to facilitate the dam's demolition. And in an effort to escape the scope of persons experiencing the hardship, CRT's supplemental information pulls in the upstream and downstream abutters, alleging that they are experiencing hardship merely due to the dam's existence. This is pure speculation and ignores the fact that a certificate of hardship applies only to the applicant slash owner of the structure at issue. The supplemental information also notes that as the dam deteriorates, the owner's risk for liability for dam failure increases. But we note that such deterioration only results from the owner's ongoing failure to properly maintain the dam. This aspect of CRT's claimed hardship would be of its own making. Importantly, the second requirement for granting a certificate of hardship is that the HDC must, quote, "Make specific factual findings demonstrating that granting the application will not involve substantial detriment to the public welfare or substantial derogation from the intent and purpose of the historic district's bylaw," close quote. Per the bylaw that established the HDC, its purpose is to promote the welfare of the public, quote, "Through the preservation and protection of the distinctive characteristics of buildings and places significant in the history and architectural heritage of the town of Bill Rica." Now, although Native American people may have been present prior to the existence of the dam, using that as a basis for demolishing a structure could be the basis for demolishing any and every structure anywhere. The dam is both a locally and nationally significant structure, and its demolition would certainly be detrimental to both the dam and the Bill Rica Mills District, which is on the National Register of Historic Places. So there appears to be no logical basis for concluding otherwise. Therefore, even if the existence of hardship is accepted, the bylaw does not allow that hardship on its own to be the basis for granting a certificate. Next, CRT claims that the HDC's position fails to address their certificate of non-applicability. CRT made no such specific request. The application that CRT submitted to the HDC through its agent Gomez and Sullivan was nothing more than the complete HDC form, which is held application for Historic Districts Commission Review. The form clearly states that its submission, quote, "Will begin the process of review for a certificate of appropriateness, non-applicability, or hardship," close quote. It's written in the disjunctive. And nowhere in the form did CRT request that the HDC consider whether its review standards would potentially not apply to the dam. In addition, the supplemental information submitted by CRT only states its belief that the project would qualify for hardship exemption. CRT's submission mentions certificate of hardship 11 times, but not once does it mention a certificate of non-applicability. At best, the non-applicability argument goes back to the threshold issue of whether the HDC has jurisdiction over the dam. Per the earlier discussion of terminology and specifically what constitutes a structure within the scope of the HDC's authority, the applicability of the HDC's review standards to the dam are clear. Now regarding CRT's claim that the HDC's decision is insufficient in law, CRT claims that the decision due to not making findings of fact is an error of law warranting its annulment. Although they cite Warner v. Lexington Historic Districts Commission for the proposition that decisions, excuse me, paraphrasing statutory language without making specific factual findings are erroneous, the basis for that case's outcome is distinctly different from the matter at hand. In Warner, the Lexington HDC, in denying the application, was required, quote, "To notify the applicant in writing setting forth therein the reasons for its determination," close quote. Per the Lexington ordinance, its HDC was required to consider several factors. The court in Warner concluded that the Lexington HDC's decision relied on criteria not found in the relevant enabling act or law, consisted of mere repetition of statutory language, and failed to include explanations of how those statutory factors bore on their denial of the certificate. The holding in Warner merely establishes the logical requirement that the town, that town HDCs follow their own rules. In the matter now before NIMCOG, unlike the Warner case, there is no requirement that factual findings accompany a denial. As explicitly, sorry, I'm just getting some feedback from someone. Thank you. As explicitly Okay, someone zoom bombed us. Anyway. As explicitly stated in the Bill Rica HDC review standards, in order to issue a certificate of hardship, the commission shall make specific factual findings. Neither the review standards nor MGL Chapter 40C upon which they're based require that denial be accompanied by factual findings. Nevertheless, the HDC provide a clear concise statement that demolition of the dam would not be in the public's best interest as the dam has local and national historic significance and should be protected and preserved. Now, we note that in Section 4B of CRT's appeal letter, it prefaces text from Section 12D of the HDC bylaw with the phrasing, quote, "With respect to a request for a certificate of hardship." But that's a misleading expansion of what that section addresses. The section only addresses situations when the HDC does grant a certificate of hardship, not when it denies one. And it requires that the HDC make two determinations when doing so. CRT states that the HDC did not even consider the required elements under Section 12D of the HDC bylaw. But there's no basis for CRT to claim to know what the HDC did or did not consider. Members of the HDC attended multiple meetings where CRT's agents provided information to consider, where members of the public provided their input, and where HDC members asked various questions. The HDC also notes that the certificate of hardship provisions in its review standards are consistent with the provisions in MGL Chapter 40C at Section 10 Subsea and are substantially identical to those of other towns such as Reading, Chelmsford, Concord, and Newton. In summary, destroying this dam would be a substantial derogation from the intent and purpose of the HDC's bylaws. The dam is a uniquely historical structure in that it didn't merely provide power to the mills north Bill Rica, enable the creation and operation of the Middlesex Canal, which was essential to the development of industry in the region, as evidenced by Lowell's Middlesex Canal Historic District. It has been designated a historic civil engineering landmark by the American Society of Civil Engineers and is an integral, if not central, part of the Bill Rica Mills District, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and on the Commonwealth's Register of Historic Places. The continuing presence of the dam and its mill pond can facilitate development in the area due to their historic and aesthetic appeal, augmented by the upcoming opening of the new Middlesex Canal Museum adjacent to the dam overlooking the mill pond, and made more likely by the revised MBTA zoning regulations that could lead to waterfront development in the area. Who knows? Perhaps CRT could even make a profit from its recent land purchase. The HDC believes that annuling this decision would ignore and negate the authority that Bill Rica granted to its HDC and would require ignoring the clearly stated Mass. General Law compliant requirements to implement that authority and that the HDC adhered to its decision. The HDC respectfully requests that NIMCOG deny CRT's appeal, or if NIMCOG believes that factual findings, though not required by statute or by law, are warranted, remand the issue to the HDC for further consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I am now going to actually open this up for public comment. If you have a comment you would like to make, I would ask that you raise your hands. There is one hand raised already. And I will take them in the order that they appear. So the first person, and you'll have one go of public comment. If you didn't get it all in that time, again, you can send me an email. Your comment period is open through this Friday at 4:00 PM. All of that information has already been shared. So with that, I'm going to move into public comment. And the first person with their hand up is Kelly Sardina. Kelly? Ms. Sardina, can you hear us? Kelly, we don't hear you. So can you hear us? You're unmuted, but there is no sound out there. Kelly, I am going to come back to you and go to the next person with their hand raised because I anticipate a lot of comments. And also I'll come right back to you after the next person who hopefully will be able to use their voice. All right, Kelly. Marlies Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. For the record, my name is Marlies Henderson, and I'm speaking as a taxpaying resident of North Bill Rica. Good evening. My statement takes less than three minutes. I appreciate this open mic opportunity, and I want to thank NIMCOG for hosting, and I appreciate the NIMCOG user-friendly website, where some of the pertinent documentation has been made readily available for public review. The June decision came as a unanimously denied certificate of hardship. I attended all the Historic Districts Commission meetings relative to the dam removal, and the commissioners did not and the commissioners did not discuss hardship at their meetings. The minutes confirm this. The Billrick Town Council stated in his June four letter that the applicant could file an application for a certificate of hardship, which was done. But the commissioners expressed personal opinions, not the demonstrations of hardship, despite taxpayer-funded council, which advised to, and I quote, carefully determine whether the applicant had satisfied the criteria as stated for a grant of a certificate of hardship, end quote. Instead, they arbitrarily denied the project on personal opinions. Despite presented suggestions of historical memorialization that would spruce up the historic district, the commissioners were unanimous in their denial. And as I stated then, for the record at their meeting, but not captured by the minutes, that the historic districts commission was missing an opportunity to preserve history by their denial. Despite being reminded that dam removal frees the river to its historic pre-colonial flow, and historical mitigation can memorialize history more safely and educationally than this obsolete and hazardous dam does now. I plead with Ms. Ray, Executive Director of the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. Uh, your position is responsible for deciding, as codified by the Billrick Historic Districts Commission bylaw, to rule on this, what I deem a injustice. It makes sense to annul the decision and that the historic districts commission issues a certificate of hardship retroactively to June twenty twenty five to allow the project to proceed, which would turn this into a win-win for all. It would grant a substantial benefit to public welfare, which is a key historic districts commission review standard. It would spare taxpayers the legal costs. Because litigation is a very expensive process, it would save the applicants, the applicants funds for purposes of historical mitigation, its municipal vulnerability preparedness, and of course, the original objective restore fish migration to the historic proportions, which ultimately benefits the public welfare. I hope this helps. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Ed Reiner?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna lower my hand and, uh, okay. Um, I'm a citizen of Bill Ricker and a butter who lives along the Concord River. And, um, first I wanted to say that I agree with the argument of non-applicability. But if that's not accepted, I also agree in the arguments that have been presented about hardship. One of the things that might not have been clearly articulated is, uh, uh, some of the, I mean, it's not practicable. I want to make it clear. It is not practicable to rebuild this dam to meet dam safety requirements of the spillway width, you know, um, and, and, uh, to put in fish passage. Um, and, uh, I could potentially address the broken low-level outlets. Uh, I remember years ago when I consulted with the Office of Dam Safety, they said, don't worry yet. If anybody wants to do, rebuild the dam, we'll make them fix the low-level outlets, which are historically called wasting gates. Those are, uh, on the, uh, facing downstream, the river left side of the structure that were going to be preserved in the, in the removal for what it's worth. But those low-level outlets leak a little. They're not controllable. Well, I remember one year I went to Ronnie Paray, the owner of the mill on the right side of things, uh, facing downstream. And I asked during a flood, can you open up, uh, your gate, uh, uh, to your sluice gate? And Ronnie complied a little bit that year. That was nice. Uh, but, you know, he had to, had to make sure that he was, uh, not, uh, uh, causing any problems. Well, his low-level, his, his gate structure doesn't open up anymore. It's not functional. It can't be used to relieve the flooding that I, 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 I'm used to. That is, I've experienced multi-times over because I live along the river. I monitor its water levels. I see how it treats my backyard. Um, now, so it was low-level outlets, uh, associated with the, with the plan to rebuild the dam? And how on earth can you do what's necessary as it hasn't been described without modifying the spillway width? And, and since the, the fish passage would take up part of the spillway width. Well, I've been involved with this debate for more than twenty years now. And as a citizen of Bill Ricker, a person who's affected by the river, by the flooding, uh, I, I want to say that it's an atrocity to think that anybody could stop or should stop uh, uh, this owner from being allowed to remove the structure. It's a, it's a godsend that it's, it's being funded by others, not by the citizens of Bill Ricker, but by others, by agencies who care about the environment, who care about fish passage. And I don't think enough has been made about the flooding impacts of this dam. Uh, that is, it, it slows the drainage. It causes, it, it starts it at a higher, uh, a higher stage. And a big flood as is, as will happen because of our climate change issues, because of the runoff characteristics and rainfall changes. You know, if we had a, a ten-inch storm or a twelve-inch storm in twenty-four or thirty-six hours, uh, parts of this whole watershed will flood and backing it up all the way to Concord. Uh, so, um, I precede you to, to allow the argument that stated it's not applicable to go forward. It makes it easier than pursuing the approval process through, through the hardship. But I agree, it's a hardship. Nobody should be required to maintain a dam that's no longer functioning. We should be allowed to restore ecosystems, and it clearly will benefit, uh, citizens like myself. Everybody in the watershed who experiences flooding will at least be in a more, in a small manner, uh, improved in that regard. So that's, that's what I had to say. Thank you very much.
Wait, Ms. Reiner, Justin Damon?
Hi, good evening. My name is Justin Damon. I am also a Bill Ricker resident. Uh, I am also on Bill Ricker's Open Space and Recreation Master Plan Committee. I'm not speaking for that committee. I'm just speaking as a private citizen this evening. Um, I support the removal of the Talbot Mills Dam for several reasons. Um, one of them is, um, I believe the town at some point was approached. Um, you know, hey, do you want to buy this dam? Do you want the dam? Um, and the town wasn't interested. So if the town's not interested in taking control of it and maintaining it, who is the town to say that the owner can't demolish it? It doesn't seem very fair to me. Um, and if I'm also correct, um, this dam removal will provide the most habitat for migratory fish of any dam removal project of its kind in New England. Um, anybody can correct me if that's, if that's wrong. I, I also believe that, um, a free-flowing river, which this was for thousands of years, um, has more historic precedent than a dam that was useful, frankly, for the blink of an eye, uh, in the grand scheme of things. And while it's a brilliant piece of engineering, um, and the history of it needs to be respected, uh, it's time for it to go. Thank you very much.
Damon, and the next person who had their hand up took it down. Does that mean they do not wish to? Okay, Daniel Pope. Daniel, you're speaking with, we cannot hear you yet. Okay, there you go. Ready? No, still no sound.
Yeah, no, you might want to click on audio in the bottom left corner and click on audio settings to select a microphone and see if that helps.
Um, Daniel, did we lose you in that process? I don't see where he went to. I know that also, um, unfortunately, Kelly Sardina also seems to have left. She left as well. I'm gonna move on. Maybe you will return. And in the process, I know there's somebody, Mary Leach, you have your hand just physically raised. I do see that. So I'm gonna go with Patrick Robbins, then Mary Leach, then Andrew Jennings, okay, in that order. So Mary, hold up, and we're gonna start with Patrick Robbins.
Yeah, my name is Patrick Robbins. I was a former officer, uh, officer of the Merrimack Valley paddlers. Um, and I just would, one thing that I haven't really, um, heard much, and I've made this argument in the past, is that by removal of the dam and restoring the beauty of the, of the natural area, and also having it be a destination for, for paddlers and recreation, um, there's potential to make, turn it into, uh, whitewater features that would draw a ton of people um, to the area. And one thing that I noticed, just, uh, actually over this past weekend when I was at the, uh, the end part of the Mohawk River, um, where that leads into the Hudson River in Waterford, New York, is that some of the features of that, and that's the Erie Canal system, and great historical preference. And one thing that I noticed is that non-functional things were ripped down, like the, the barge tow, the tow path, and turned into like bike paths. Other things were converted from the industrial to recreational boating, and they kept the lock. So, but by doing that, it's a destination, and as a destination, you actually draw more attention, more knowledge, spreading more information about the great greatness of the, in, in that case, it's the Erie Canal. In this case, it would be the Middlesex Canal because you got more people viewing it instead of a tiny amount of people coming that are just already enthusiasts about it. So that's the problem in North Billrica. There's no draw currently, and it'll continue to be that way. And of course, you can't really ever preserve something entirely that's non-functional. So that, I just want to make that, that, that point, that would be a huge draw if you can remove that dam. And that's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Patrick, and Mary Leach. Mary, you, I mean, yourself?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, I'm, I'm for the dam, and I feel like the Bill, Bill Rick historic district commission did exactly what they were seated to do and by calling it historic, uh, uh, an item of historic significance. Um, the dam draws people who like to take their photographs. You Google Bill Ricka, pictures of the dam come up. It tells its own story. And also, you talk about bringing it back to what it was, you know, hundreds of years ago for the fish. I see beavers, I see herons, I see other animals in there. Are we gonna take them out and relocate them? I mean, we have to think more broadly than, um, one type of thing. I feel like I support the historic district commission's decision here. I feel like they made the right decision for, for the role that they're cast in. I feel like I know a little bit about dams. That dam is not in the danger of failing. If it failed, it would just overtop. You'd get rid of the dam. It's all gonna be going down the river anyway. And if our whole idea is we just want a whitewater thrill, we can go to get whitewater thrills other places. We don't need to get them here in one piece of history that tells a story. So I would encourage, um, people to think about it a little bit more broadly. Um, I think that, um, it's definitely historic. It has historic merit, and I would like to see it preserved. Thank you.
Now, Andrew Jennings?
Good evening. My name is Andrew Jennings. I live at twenty-nine Talbot Avenue in Billrica, just a short, uh, distance from, uh, the dam. Uh, personally, I'm conflicted about whether the dam should be removed. I recognize the benefits that the proponents of removal cite, but I see associated with those, uh, removal come huge, uh, intangible costs that the proponents have not considered. I'm particularly concerned about the way that history has, uh, been described. This is not, this was never an industrial dam. It was a dam built in eighteen twenty-eight to, uh, replace the, uh, uh, canal, and it was for canal purposes. The Talbot Mills didn't even appear for four decades after, uh, uh, this. This is not a typical New England, uh, mill dam, but a very unique, uh, space when you bring in the Middlesex Canal to it. The Middlesex Canal is one of the great engineering, uh, achievements, uh, uh, in that period following the Revolutionary War, and it's unique because it had involvement of, uh, the Revolutionary War heroes. It was recognized, uh, as the greatest engineering achievement in eighteen oh eight by the Secretary of the Treasury. The Middlesex Canal was where the transfer of key European engineering, uh, technology came to the Americas. It was a project which helped move the engineering, uh, field from military engineering to, uh, uh, civil engineering. Uh, the impact on the development of the towns along the way, uh, uh, is impressive. Probably Lowell would not have, uh, developed as a manufacturing center if it had not been from the Middlesex Canal. Uh, the Middlesex Canal was there so that building materials, uh, raw, raw materials and finished good could, could do it. But it was there, uh, uh, at least a decade before, uh, Lowell had the first brick put down in the, uh, uh, engineering. I think it was a model for the Erie Canal, and there's documented evidence that the Erie Canal builders came here to find out how to, uh, do things right. I think that the designation by the ASCE as a civil engineering landmark, and one of the first four, uh, that they ever, uh, think is really critical to the uniqueness and historical importance, and I think that has been understated. The Middlesex Canal has even been mentioned in, uh, international, uh, documents. So we have here a very unique historic treasure that, uh, is not available elsewhere. And I think that we need to be very careful about what we do, uh, with this. I can see scenarios where mitigation could be possible, but those mitigations would be very expensive. Uh, and I don't think that, uh, the budget for the dam removal has ever considered the unique, uh, historic, uh, the, the unique historic aspects of, uh, uh, this site. And I think in evaluating any change that those need to be included. Thank you very much.
And now, Tom Lincoln, MCC.
Uh, yes, I want to thank, uh, NIMCOG for giving us the opportunity to speak here. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay. I never know when, whether the microphone, uh, works. I won't repeat, uh, Mr. Valentine's excellent, uh, uh, arguments, uh, for retaining the dam. But I want to make a couple of comments based on what has been in the record and what has been said, uh, tonight. First of all, I think this whole project has been, uh, an exercise in starting with the conclusions that people want, the proponents want, and then bootstrapping their way, uh, with the evidence afterwards. Uh, this is certainly true, uh, in terms of the dismissal of the idea of a fishway or fish ladder, which is a perfectly good compromise, uh, in terms of maintaining historic resources and, uh, undertaking the very, uh, good goals of ecological, uh, restoration. It certainly is true in the rather elaborate, uh, bootstrapping, uh, done in the document, uh, at the previous meeting from the Gomez folks about, uh, the costs of the, uh, of, of the costs in the hardships, uh sensible hardships for re- retaining uh the dam. Um I think the arguments uh by CRT are patently uh deficient. Uh, this is clearly a structure. It's been a structure for two hundred years. I don't know what more you need to be uh a structure. A second, uh as Mr. Valentine mentioned, I think it's rather difficult to uh maintain a hardship argument after spending sixty, sixty, sixty-seven thousand dollars on maintenance and more sanely recently spending four hundred thousand dollars on, so about two acres of land uh near the dam. There's also a has been uh a, an assertion that uh uh keeping the dam uh or removing the dam does not damage the public uh welfare. Well, I think frankly, this has to do with how you define the public welfare. First of all, uh and nobody has mentioned this, the Middlesex Canal Association has invested to date almost three million dollars in a new canal museum exactly on this site. In fact, they started work on that museum before the dam removal was even uh proposed. Uh, their entire mission is based on their location, which is at the heart of the Middlesex Canal. Um, removing the dam also removes the summit pond, which is sometimes called the mill pond, uh which was an absolute unique feature. It seems rather um counterintuitive to say that we're going to talk about history, but we're going to take away the evidence first, and then we'll, then we'll talk about it. Which brings me to the entire topic of uh mitigation. None of the apparently budgeted mitigation items come remotely close, close to fulfilling uh the goal of what is happening already by having the dam in uh in place. You can put as many signs as you want. You can build a little, a little structure out of a couple of the, of the granite uh blocks, but that in no way is going to uh substitute for the actual historic uh art- artifact uh here. So we would urge um the uh folks at NIMCO to uh support the uh historic districts uh commission and uphold their denial uh of the uh dam removal of a proposal. Uh, this is both sensible. It's supported by the law. It's supported by common sense. Uh lots of folks here have been talking about things that are sensible, and I think that's about as sensible as you can uh you can get. I think that that will allow uh the interested parties to come to a compromise uh in terms of providing both for the improvement of, of fish migration uh and the preservation of history at this unique uh site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom Lincoln. And now Dan Hope.
Thank, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate uh the opportunity to, to speak. Um, I think um I want to talk about this from a different angle. And uh that removing the dam could really create a lasting historic legacy for Billrica and the communities upstream by improving water quality, not only in, in Bill, Billrica, but because the water moves, moves quicker throughout the watershed. Um, and, and, and then also eliminating the invasive species that are clogging the, you know, the overheaded mill pond, overheated mill pond. And uh, and then uh increasing property values, certainly. Um, but historic preservation could include interpretive features that honor not only the Talbot Mill Dam's three hundred and fourteen years, but it's much uh, and it's much shorter industrial legacy, but also the much, much longer history of the indigenous people of the watershed and uh, and in, around Billrica. And this could position Billrica as a regional leader in environmental stewardship. Um and innovative infrastructure development by improving a high-quality outdoor space for providing opportunities for local students to study Billrica's industrial and indigenous history. Um, in addition, establishing a world-class outdoor classroom for Billrica Public School students to study the biology of restoring a river ec- uh ecology as fish migrate migrations are finally able to recover and return, enhancing the entire Sudbury, Assabette, and Concord River watershed, as well as the Gulf of Maine and Cape Cod Bay. Uh, it's, that's an incredible opportunity to set an example to other communities in the same position with obsolete dams. Um, and I, I also um would beg to differ with the uh Mr., Mr. Valentine uh regarding um hardship. Uh, there is a requirement to uh improve the dam, and that is going to be a tremendous expense, more than the cost of removing the dam. Um, and that is uh putting in fish ladders, which was mentioned earlier. Um, there is certainly a hardship here, and I, I don't think we can get away from that. And, and a risk is climate change increases floods and the intensity of rains. Uh, this dam is, is more and more at risk. And so there, there is a risk to the, to the owner because of that, and the risk to the, to the, the town of Billrica. Um, so uh, I, I think there's an opportunity here, an opportunity of a lifetime that I hope that we can take advantage of. The money is there. It's only to take down the dam. You don't have the option to do a fish ladder, but it's going to continue to cost more and more downstream as, as we learn. As we start taking dams down, the benefits have been tremendous and uh, and, and the ability of migratory fish to get up into the rivers and the opportunities for people in, in, with recreation. So um I hope that, that we uh see a vision, a larger vision for uh not only preserving history, but, but an environmental history and, and a longer indigenous history as well. Thank you very much.
Brian H.
Okay. Hello. Um, my name is Brian Henderson, and I live in North Billrica, Mass. I've been a resident of Billrica all my life, and when I was born, I was a hundred and fifty yards from the dam. I've always remembered it as a beautiful site and um a landmark within our town. I um also really appreciate the HDC's efforts and all the preservations and the things they do. That um, it feels a bit funny to feel that there's a uh yes, no about this, and I prefer to look at it as what is the win-win in this process? Um, the adverse ecological effect is significant. The river existed long before colonial times, and the engineering at that time was outstanding and, and marvel to be upheld and preserved. But the, also the river existed before this. And the ecological system has been significantly impaired. Unfortunately, a fish ladder does not restore ecological systems. It is a mere Band-Aid on a huge heart attack, and it doesn't really do it. Is each fish ladder can only transport certain types of fish, and some are good for one type and one's good for another, but also there's an ongoing cost that would add to the hardship. Um, that, you know, to claim that there is no danger in this, you can't claim that there isn't any danger either. So that was very um hard to hear that, yes, there is no sort of crack in the dam and ready to go, but we can't predict that this is going to last forever, and nor should it. It is a, it's a dangerous potential with a hardship on the owner to maintain this so that our well-being is done. To go on with uh mitigating instead of, you know, litigation uh would be better because we can then turn this more to a win-win. Where we could have uh beautiful things like, we have the Amos Wyman uh Wyman Foundation with a placid there, but when you go there, you still gain the full knowledge and presence of the historic event. It's really a hole in the ground and, but it still is preserved and well documented. Um, the bylaws in the HDC do not account for ecological damage. And when historic buildings are replaced, they don't paint it with lead paint anymore because that's ecologically damaging. So it's really looking at what are we doing to our ecology? And um again, it was amazing engineering feat of its time, but yet it does not uh it, it is damaging the river and the species in it. In two thousand sixteen, when I first heard about this, I was like, no way, don't take the dam down. And I started understanding, well, they're talking about fish. I have been a fish counter for nine years since then. And I do understand that this, the fish that are no longer coming up the river are part of what our fish supply is based on. And if we cut that out, we cut out our food supplies as our population grows. That's another real tragedy that comes with this. So how do we turn this into a win-win? And keep the preservation, document it, show it, perhaps put a bridge over where the dam was with plenty of information, invite more people to view this area, and find the truth of the whole situation. Again, I am trying not to be disrespectful to the HDC. I find them very hardworking and doing a great job, but I do disagree. I do think it's a tremendous hardship, and I would appreciate if they would uh support the dam removal and nullifying the um the uh denial. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson, uh Ozzy.
Hello, Chester Osborne of Maynard, a citizen of the watershed, but I go by Ozzy. Um, a lot of great comments. I'll echo, echo what the two gentlemen in front of me said, as well as others far more eloquently than I. I'll just sort of speak to one of my former professions. Uh, I'm a devout paddler, and I paddled from my house from Maynard, Massachusetts to the Atlantic Ocean and had a portage around this dam. Um, and I think you all know what that looks like, but I just remind ourselves that, you know, this is both an asset and a liability. And from a municipal perspective, rarely do we actually do the programmatic funds for the maintenance and operations of that. So, you know, many of us will talk about the aesthetics of the pond or the history of it, um, or what it brings to the fishery or for paddling, all valid perspectives and points. But I just caution us in this discussion to think about, have we really done what is right by the stadium, the communities downstream and upstream of it to allot for its proper maintenance and operation? I know very few municipalities or even corporations that take care of these types of structures anymore, and I think that is a strong weight in favor of removal. Thank you very much.
Ozzy, and now um iPhone seventeen Pro. We need that, please. And tell us your name, please.
Hello.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, uh Ron Chick. I just want to offer a couple of perspectives. Um, one is upstream impact. Um, um, uh open space, accessible uh advocate in Framingham in regionally to provide and create venues that provide access to all people instead of just able-bodied people. Um, and I'm looking at the Bill Ricka site, which I visited a few weeks ago as a tremendous opportunity for Bill Ricka regarding mitigation. And I heard a couple of comments about mitigation and the challenges of it. However, I have firsthand experience of several years in Framingham of uh either applying for funds or having others apply for funds and raising a million and a half dollars to create uh accessible trails along the Sudbury River in Framingham that the Concord River uh eventually flows to. So uh what I want to talk about is rather than looking at this as a straightforward infrastructure project, um, I see it as a lasting community asset. By incorporating boardwalks, viewing platforms, accessible walkways, and educational pro- programming, the town can create a vibrant destination for all Bill Ricka, Bill Ricka residents and visitors that would find this very attractive and appealing and accessible. Uh, the, it would develop a community infrastructure that's accessible. A picture where the, where part of the pond is now would be exposed land. You would have, can have the elevated boardwalks, multi-level viewing platforms, interpretive stations, also in accordance with universal accessibility designs. Um, it would be able to provide access for wheelchairs, walkers, mobility devices, so that the whole community can experience the restored riverfront. This inclusive infrastructure would provide year-round outdoor recreation and educational opportunities for residents of all ages and abilities. Um, the watershed fish passage is, is a big deal upstream. Uh, we have created uh on the Sudbury River, three experiential classrooms that are substantial for Framingham students and other students to experience the river. With the removal of the dam, they would also have the opportunity to experience the migratory fish passage and the history of that, so that that same footprint would, can be created in Bill Ricka by creating informational panels, observation platforms, having them be accessible. Uh, right now, I'm working with a variety of organizations to create environmental education K through twelve that could be used on these platforms. And Bill Ricka would have the same opportunity to bring all of the children of Bill Ricka to this location because they would have a place to stand, a place to view. Um, the historic preservation part of it is it's really rich in the opportunity that it provides because we're creating informational panels that create the, the history of the area, the indigenous peoples, the wildlife that was there. I heard Beaver and, and uh, uh Blue Heron uh mentioned, they would thrive in this environment because upstream, it would create an amazing enriched food web that they would all benefit from. Um, Bill Ricka can position itself as a regional leader in environmental stewardship and innovative infrastructure development. Uh, funding is available. Um, the recreational and health benefits are outstanding. The educational resources are outstanding. And this funding available. Uh, I've accessed funding from Framingham's Community Preservation Committee, from Mass Trails, from the Solomon Foundation, from Saxonville Mills, uh that people want to provide and promote access to environmental education, environmental awareness, uh environmental stewardship. And what you have in Bill Ricka is a fabulous opportunity to create boardwalks, platforms, trails along the river, uh fishing platforms, uh educational platforms, uh so that uh I think it's a rich opportunity, and you really should look at the mitigation part of it because the funding comes from multiple sources, including the Mass Office of Disabilities. Uh, I am a member of the Mass Office of Outdoor Recreation uh Trails Access Working Group. I'm not speaking for them, but what it has done for me is it showed me the priority that the Commonwealth has to create access for all people to the outdoors. And Bill Ricka has the opportunity to do that. So thank you, and I'll be happy to share at any time my experience. And your water chestnuts uh issue will be likely resolved. I worked with water chestnuts on the Sudbury River for ten years, and we've, we've come up with really good solutions, and it's no longer a major problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Matthew Cranny.
Thank you.
Hello, Matthew Cranny, Deputy Director of the Merrimack River Watershed Council. First, I just want to say to everyone um on this call, congratulations. You are also now officially part of the history of this site. Um, people have been arguing about this dam for as long as there have been dams on this site, including luminaries like Henry David Thoreau. So we're all now part of this greater dialogue and exchange of history, and I find that really exciting. Um, first, I just wanted to clarify a couple of statements that I believe were mischaracterizations in um the presentation by Mr. Valentine. Um, on the story map posted by the Merrimack River Watershed Council, um where it states that there's something in poor condition, that's a specific reference to the sluice gate, um also referred to, I believe, in another testimony that is not technically, I believe, part of uh Mr. Martin's property, but is not functioning. And so it is accurate to describe that as in poor condition. It lets water flow through underneath the abutting building uncontrolled. Um, additionally, as mentioned, this is a significant hazard dam, um which means there would be significant economic impact if there were to be a failure, and the dam would not meet economic impact if there were to be a failure, and the dam would not meet current safety standards for spillways if it were to be worked on. That being said, I just want to reiterate kind of I firmly, and MRWC firmly stands behind the hardship argument due to the fact that, as previously mentioned, the current owner has tried multiple times to donate the dam both to the town and to the MCA. Those were refused, and I think that that kind of shows to the fact that this dam in the future, it requires ongoing maintenance, its own cost, and in the future would need to be upgraded to meet safety and environmental regulations. Both of those upgrades would also greatly distort the historical character of the site. So I also would like to encourage for the commission that the opportunity for interpretation at this site is so rich, partially because of the conflicts, right? There's a huge engineering history here, but there's also this longer environmental use, conflicts between agricultural and industrial use, basically the history between rail and canal, and also kind of indigenous lifeways and how we can now currently face our, you know, climate change future. This is such a rich site, and I think that these kind of conversations can be really fertile for how we can best make use of this site. So thank you to NIMCOG for giving me the opportunity to speak right now.
And now Annie Audio.
Good evening. My name's Annie Audio, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Boston Society of Civil Engineers. We were a part of the dedication of the Merrimack Canal as a national historic landmark, and I do serve on both the national and local committee. I can say that we cannot take a position in terms of yea or nay, but I do like some of the conversation that I hear in terms of there are ways that you can preserve the, the history of the area. And I encourage Billerica to, to take that opportunity to do so, so that the public can enjoy what they're currently enjoying, but perhaps in a, a different experience to be developed. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Very much. And any, any other comments? I don't see any hands raised, like physically or otherwise. So I think then with that, I'm going to close this hearing. So thank you to everyone who provided comments this evening. We appreciate the time, thought, and perspectives that each of you shared. All written and oral comments submitted as part of this hearing and all of the other comments submitted will be entered into the record. At this time, the public comment portion of this hearing again is now closed. NIMCOG will now move into the next phase of the appeal process, which includes reviewing all substantive materials, evaluating the technical record, and applying the standards outlined in the Billerica Historic Districts Act. The record will remain open through Friday, December fifth at four PM, as I noted. So if you do have any additional comments that you wish to share with me, please do so by that time. A written decision will be issued by NIMCOG within the required statutory timeframe and will be made publicly available by December nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Thank you again for your participation and for contributing to the thorough transparency process this evening. With that, I will say goodnight. Thank you all.
Thank you, Executive Director.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Appreciate you hosting this. Thank you.
No problem.